Councilman Euler, are you? Good, good.
Good evening, everyone. It is 6:03 PM on Tuesday, October 28th, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone here in our historic city council audience, our chambers, as well as our listening audience watching on cable channel 22 and the City of Peoria YouTube channel. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open, please call the roll.
Mayor Ali.
Present.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Carmona.
Here.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Gordon Young.
Present.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Regenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Valpula.
Present.
And Councilmember Vespa.
Here.
You have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Everyone, please join me and stand for a moment of silent prayer, silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk?
We are at proclamations.
We have several proclamations today. Five, in fact. The first recognizes our United States Marine Corps. And we have Mr. Dale Miller and Mr. Scott Grubbs. Would you please come forth to the podium? The proclamation reads, "Whereas the United States Marine Corps has protected Americans and guarded their freedom for the past 250 years, and whereas since its creation on November 10th, 1775, in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, the term 'Marine' has been associated with courage, professionalism, and military proficiency. Whereas a Marine is trained to hold their ground against any odds and to always be faithful to God, country, and Corps, standing ready to fight anytime or anywhere the President or Congress may designate. And whereas the City of Peoria is proud of our community's contribution to the Marine tradition and salute Marines serving around the globe. Now therefore I, Reed Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby celebrate the 250th birthday of the United States Marine Corps in Peoria, Illinois." Thank you for your service, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate, we all, as a group, appreciate everything that you do. We appreciate this designation. And we celebrate. Our birthdays come around once a year, we celebrate every year, but this one's special. So, thank you very much, simplify.
You're welcome, welcome. Our next proclamation recognizes Southside Mission's 100th anniversary. Wow. And we want to welcome the Executive Director of Southside Mission, our own Reverend Craig D. Williams, to the podium. And Reverend Williams, I happily attended your gala event. It was gala, it was outstanding. I would like, before I read the proclamation, proclamation, for you to identify who you have standing with you.
Okay, I have Ron Wyatt, our, I'm sorry, I had a brain fart, our Vice President of the Board, Lord have mercy, and Mr. Jerry Johnson, who is the Assistant Executive Director, and Rich Drager that's hiding back there, I don't know why, but he's back there.
Okay, great, wonderful. Whereas, Southside Mission was founded in 1925 with the purpose of providing vital assistance to individuals and families in Peoria, Illinois, particularly in the 61605 zip code. And whereas for an entire century, Southside Mission has faithfully served as a beacon of hope, support, and empowerment for the community, offering essential services and resources such as educational programs, youth summer camps, thrift stores, and food for those in need. And whereas Southside Mission's enduring commitment to serving the underserved through its diverse programs inspires generosity, compassion, and volunteerism, helping build stronger and more resilient communities and families in Peoria. And whereas the 100th anniversary of Southside Mission is a momentous occasion to reflect on the past, celebrate its accomplishments, and look toward the future with optimism as it continues to serve the people of Peoria for generations to come. Now therefore I, Reed Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, do hereby recognize and celebrate the 100th anniversary of Southside Mission.
We are very humble and honored to have this proclamation today. A hundred years of service, that is just unexplainable, but we know that God has just blessed us to continue on serving the zip area codes 61605, and we're just so grateful and humble of this acknowledgement.
Thank you. Only the strongest can survive a century, so congratulations to you. Our next proclamation recognizes Community Foundation Week, and we have the President and Chief Executive Officer of the Community Foundation of Central Illinois, Mr. Mark Roberts, also the Chair of Community Foundation of Central Illinois Board, LeAnn Miller. Thank you for joining us. Whereas, community members, neighborhoods, institutions, and organizations in the City of Peoria have historically benefited from the ongoing generosity of donations from families, businesses, and community foundations. Whereas the Community Foundation of Central Illinois, CFCI, has granted $147 million in grants to nonprofit organizations since its inception in 1985, and I remember that when it started. Whereas one of the most significant ways to ensure a strong community, economic vitality, and educational success is through the active presence of a community foundation. In the 2025 fiscal year, thanks to the generosity of donors, CFCI distributed 749 grants totaling $7,712,918, with a focus on supporting children and youth, community improvement, education, health and human services, workforce development, and fostering the local arts community. Whereas CFCI has numerous funds and initiatives, including the Women's Fund of Central Illinois, that ensure the continued support of programs for women and girls. And whereas our community is fortunate to have the Community Foundation of Central Illinois as a resource for collective giving, their dedicated staff and volunteers work tirelessly every day to inspire philanthropy, improve the quality of life, strengthen nonprofits, foster collaboration, and provide leadership in Central Illinois. Now therefore I, Reed Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby acknowledge November 12th through November 18th as Community Foundation Week in Peoria, Illinois.
Well, thank you, Mayor Ali, and thank you, councilmembers, thank you, city staff as well. I'm pleased to be here, as the mayor mentioned, joined here by our Board Chair of our excellent Board of Directors of the Community Foundation, LeAnn Miller. And on behalf of our fund holders and our staff and all of the stakeholders of our community foundation here locally, it's my honor to accept this proclamation. Across the country, community foundations help connect people who care with causes that matter. I love that phrase, and I use it frequently. We work to build strong, vibrant communities, and this week, we are celebrating with over 900 other community foundations across the United States. These are organizations that help to provide essential services like healthcare, and food banks, and libraries, and volunteer fire departments, and on and on and on. In 2024, last year, these foundations collectively granted over $30 billion back into their communities, supporting all of those organizations and so many more. Locally, as the mayor just mentioned, we have, at the Community Foundation, granted over $7.7 million back into our community last year. That is the largest amount in the history of the Community Foundation, and we've granted nearly $150 million into the community since our inception in 1985. And it makes me point out, we have a 250th anniversary behind us, a 100th anniversary, and this, of course, would be our 40th anniversary, so we're proud of that, but we're particularly proud of these community partners as well, so. We are among the largest community foundations in Illinois by asset size, and one of the two largest downstate south of the burbs by asset size. That's good news for our community. And we're making an impact by addressing food insecurity, workforce readiness, issues impacting women and girls, arts and culture in this community, hundreds of thousands of dollars in scholarships to our local students annually, and so much more. What we know is that by aggregating the financial resources of individuals and families and other nonprofits and corporations, we can amplify our collective giving to do so much more in a community. And by working with so many partners, we are collaborative focused at the Community Foundation, we're helping to lead the way towards an ever improving quality of life in our areas. So, we are very honored to get to do this work on behalf of our community. I see so many of you around the circle here that are engaged with the foundation in some ways. We're thankful for all of you and for all of our community members, and we thank you for this recognition today. Thank you so much.
Mark, how many CEOs have there been?
There have been four CEOs in the 40-year history of the Community Foundation.
And how long have you led the organization?
It's over 17 years at this point. I had hair when I began, Mayor.
Well, we thank you for your leadership, and Ms. Miller, you as well. Thank you for your service.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Our next proclamation recognizes Hindu Heritage Month, and we have Mugda, Mugda Patikar, and Nikhil Utar. Did I say that right?
Yes.
Okay, good, or close enough, huh? Thank you. Whereas Hinduism, one of the world's oldest religions, is rooted in the timeless values of truth, compassion, nonviolence, service, and respect for all beings, ideas, and have inspired millions across the globe for thousands of years. And whereas the Hindu community in Peoria and throughout the United States has made invaluable contributions to the fields of education, medicine, business, technology, art, and public service, enriching our city's cultural and civic life. And whereas Hindu Heritage Month offers all Peorians an opportunity to recognize, honor, and celebrate the diverse traditions, languages, philosophies, and cultural practices that are associated with Hinduism and continue to inspire generations. And whereas the City of Peoria proudly acknowledges the Hindu community's commitment to peace, unity, and service, reflecting our nation's shared values. Now therefore I, Reed Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby recognize the month of October as Hindu Heritage Month in Peoria.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Reed Ali. My name is Nikhil Utar.
I am Mugda Patikar. We are volunteers of Hindu Services Vaksang Peoria Chapter.
And thank you, Honorable Mayor Ali, for this proclamation. The members of Hindu community in Peoria are proud to have contributed to the great city of Peoria in many ways. As physicians, professors, engineers, entrepreneurs, and in numerous civic and volunteer roles, our community has found success not only in personal and professional endeavors, but also in enriching the social and cultural fabric of Peoria. However, this progress has been possible only because of the warm welcome, support, and encouragement we have received from broader Peoria community. Just as seed can grow into a strong and flourishing tree only when nurtured by the fertile soil, water, and protection, our community has thrived thanks to the inclusive and supportive spirit of Peoria, and for that, we are deeply grateful. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
The months of October and November hold special significance for Hindus as they mark the celebration of important festivals such as Navratri and Diwali. These festivals promote the message of triumph of good over evil and light over darkness. In the spirit of giving and service, we are honored to participate in initiatives like the ongoing Seva Diwali Food Drive, which will benefit Center for Prevention of Abuse, Neighborhood House, and Treven School, through this which we share the joy of Diwali with our less fortunate brothers and sisters of Peoria. We hope that in turn, the many vibrant and joyous Hindu festivals celebrated across the city have also enriched the lives of all Peorians, promoting the values of unity, peace, universal oneness that lie at the heart of our ancient Hindu faith. Thank you once again for recognizing October as Hindu Heritage Month and for celebrating the diversity that strengthens our community. Thank you.
And also congratulations on your amazing Diwali event at the Peoria Civic Center this past weekend. Congratulations. Our final proclamation recognizes Native American Heritage Month. It's presented by the City of Peoria, and we have Robert Chef, otherwise known as Wolf Eyes, and Julie Ellis. Is Julie here also?
Yeah, she's right here.
Okay. Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians, Alaska Native Peoples, and Indigenous Peoples. And whereas the contributions of Native American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich history throughout the United States. And whereas the name Peoria derives from the Algonkin language spoken by the Peoria Tribe of Indians of Oklahoma. While Peoria originally meant comes carrying a pack on his back, a more modern translation has defined it as "to dream with the help of a man or two." And whereas we recognize the Native Americans who lived in Illinois and contributed to our community's cultural legacy, we acknowledge those who made their home here first, the Sauk, Meskawee, Potawatomi, Kikapoo, Winnebago, Cahokia, Kalaskia, and Peoria, among many others. And whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976, and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as Native American Heritage Month. Now therefore I, Reed Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, do hereby acknowledge November as Native American Indian Heritage Month in Peoria.
You gotta, you gotta kind of bear with me for a minute. On September 8th, I had cervical spine removed in my neck. I got 90% robotic in my neck now, I'm still recovering, so kind of bear with my speech a little bit. I'm not in my native gear because of that reason. Mayor Ali, I got a certificate here for you, I don't want to be realized, this is our fourth year. So, before I speak, I'm gonna play, I think on YouTube, from our Native Americans. I want to speak about before I play this. Here in Peoria, Illinois, I heard that there's a, I guess, not a law, but someone in the political forums has said that Native Americans can't speak Native American language. Why? Why can't we speak Chinese? You speak Hindu? You speak any other languages. Why can't we speak Native American language? Three police officers told me that the last three weeks. There's ordinance! I didn't know that. So, I ask, I'm gonna play this. If I go to jail for speaking my native language, then take me. So I'm gonna play this real quick from our Native American person, that's a very outspoken person, they just went to Congress last week, so I'll play this real quick. This is a traditional greeting of my people that I am bound to give. I'll be it, it's a short version. What I said in my own language translated into English thusly. Hello, my relatives. I have an Ogallala Lakota, and I come from our very sacred holy land, the Black Hills, where Yellow Thunder Village is. My mother is from the War Eagle Clan, and my father's family is from the Crazy Horse Clan. This greeting is to this day the way all Indians throughout the nation still greet one another, those that still know their culture. This is the only way we present ourselves to one another that is acceptable. We tell you who we are, where we are from, who we are from, our clans, and we do this without ever saying our name. Anything less would be an insult to you and to my people. Senators?
So, Uso and Wanda, I'm saying thank you, and I welcome you to your, my home, in your home. As Americans, we're supposed to be American people. We should have freedom of speech, freedom of religion, freedom of culture, freedom of anything. So why is my language being taken away? Why can't I speak Cherokee? My kids this last year rowboat report on Native American history. The teachers told them in District 150, we don't talk about those people. Why not? We're still here. So next year, fifth year anniversary, Mayor, when we do the proclamation again, if you're still here, I want to do an honorable here and there. American ceremony, it'll take about five or six minutes. I'm not gonna speak, I'm not gonna do nothing, it's gonna do the ceremony only, as our fifth year anniversary. So I ask all city council members, anybody here, that as a Native American, this upsets me today, that our Native American people that serve in the armed forces, Marines, Army, Navy, does not get recognized as Native Americans, as our service, that we serve the American people. So again, I want to thank you again, Mayor, for inviting me. I want to bring that issue up to play today, that why can I not speak my language? That other cultures that's among us speaks their language, why can't I speak mine? Thank you, and I got that plaque.
Thank you, Wolf Eyes. Happy Native American Indian Heritage Month, thank you. Madam Clerk?
We are at the approval of the minutes.
Councilman Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the special city council meeting held October 7th, 2025, the minutes of the regularly scheduled joint city council town board meeting held October 14th, and the minutes of the special city council meeting held October 21st as printed.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Clerk? We have two town items. 25-295 is a communication from the Town Officials Budget Committee with a request to adopt an ordinance, excuse me, loving and assessing taxes for the fiscal year beginning April 1, 2025, and ending March 31, 2026, for the General Fund and the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund of the Town of the City of Peoria, Peoria County, and State of Illinois, in the amount of $362,000.
Trustee Gordon Young?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve item 25-295.
Seconded by Trustee Allen. Any questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
25-296 is a communication from the Town Officials Budget Committee with 25-296 is a communication from the Town Officials Budget Committee with a request to adopt an ordinance levying and assessing taxes for the fiscal year beginning April 1, 2025, and ending March 31, 2026, for the General Assistance Fund of the Town of the City of Peoria, Peoria County, and State of Illinois, in the amount of $1,057,540.
Trustee Gordon Young?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve item 25-296.
Seconded by Trustee Allen. Any questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We're at the city portion of the agenda. We're at the consent agenda. 25-297 is a communication with request to approve an amended settlement agreement in Heidelberg versus Hibser. 25-298 is a communication with request to approve an intergovernmental agreement for shared cloud gavel services between County of Peoria and the City of Peoria. 25-289 is a communication with request to adopt an ordinance amending Section 28-62, reducing the number of members on the Transportation Committee. 25-299 is a communication with request to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 3, Article 2, Section 3-52 of the Code of the City of Peoria to revise the Class G liquor license requirements. 25-300 is a communication with request to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 31 of the Code of the City of Peoria pertaining to stormwater utility. 25-301 is a communication with request to adopt an ordinance partially abating the tax heretofore levied to pay special service area property taxes on the Holiday M Property Tax Special Service Area in the amount of $151,000. 25-302 is a communication with request to adopt an ordinance levying a special service area real estate tax in the amount of $148,060 against specified parcels as described in Exhibit A for tax year 2025 for the Knoxville Junction Special Service Area. 25-303 is a communication with request to adopt an ordinance levying a special service area real estate tax in the amount of $6,400 for the tax year 2025 for the Lamont Avenue SSA. 25-304 is a communication with request to adopt an ordinance partially abating the tax heretofore levied to pay special service area property taxes on the Peoria Sports Center Property Tax Special Service Area in the amount of $221,000. 25-305 is a communication with request to adopt an ordinance levying a special service area real estate tax in the amount of $97,000 for the tax year 2025 for the Westlake Special Service Area. 25-306 is a communication with request concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance rezoning property from a Class C2 large-scale commercial district to a Class R3 single-family residential district for the property located at 6006 North Big Hollow Road, Peoria, Illinois. 25-307 is a communication with request concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R3 single-family residential district for a short-term rental for the property located at 3806 West Thistle Lane, Peoria, Illinois. 25-308 is a communication with request to concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending an existing special use ordinance number 16031 as amended for a residential cluster development in a Class R3 single-family residential district to reduce the previously amended rear yard building setback from 19 feet to 15 feet for the properties identified as 2526, 2602, 2606, 2610, and 2614 West Lauren Lane, Peoria, Illinois. And 25-309 is a communication with request to approve the site application for a Class GD Beer and Wine Co-Working Space liquor license with the retail sale of alcohol for Pilot Tasting Room LLC doing business as Pilot Tasting Room at 820 Southwest Adams Street, contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of occupancy with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve, and that concludes our consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any items to remove from consent? Councilman Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to remove 25-307, please.
307?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
And if I can, there is nothing else to be removed? Anything else to be removed? I'd like to move to.
I'm waiting to hear.
Okay.
Any other items to remove from consent? Can I get a motion to approve the remaining items moved by Councilmember Seer, seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young? Any questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
25-307 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with request to concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R3 single-family residential district for a short-term rental for the property located at 3806 West Thistle Lane, Peoria, Illinois.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Give the floor to Ms. Allison.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. I just need to give a little bit of an update on this request for the short-term rental at this thistle property. After the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, we were made aware of covenants that are recorded against the subdivision Summer Ridge, and we reviewed those covenants thoroughly with the assistance of our great legal department. We determined that the covenants are applicable in that they state that the business or commercial uses are prohibited, which includes short-term rental uses. So I do need to revise our staff recommendation to recommending denial because of those covenants, which in our code for short-term rentals are something that we need to uphold for that subdivision. Any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Well, Director Allison, I understand in talking with our Corporation Council earlier that you're planning to change the process?
So, yes.
So research is done on the front end, and we don't have to?
Absolutely. This is what we can learn from this, is to do the research for these covenants on all short-term rentals as quickly as possible so that we can, you know, catch it earlier, much earlier. So I do apologize for this.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to deny the application for special use in a Class R3 single-family residential for a short-term rental.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at presentations. 25-310 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Public Works with a request to receive and file a presentation on snow removal operations.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's that time of year again, and as we prepare for the snow season, we wanted to ask our Deputy Director of Public Works to come in and give you another presentation on our snow planning efforts for the upcoming winter season, unfortunately.
Welcome, Director Maroon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, manager, and council. Always look forward to being here at this time of the year. It just kind of sets the tone for the next few months of what's to come. We don't know, but we are prepared. So we want to talk a little bit about our snow plan for this year, or for this season, I should say, and give you some insight as there are a few changes, so we'll talk about that here in a little bit. Here's one of the changes, increasing from 21 to 23 snow routes. With the additional full-time staff that we've been able to bring onboard the last couple of years, it's now allowed us to increase our snow routes from 21 to 23. And what that does essentially is it'll help us speed up the process of completing the snow removal. As the snow dissipates in the air, we clean up the streets and we move on a little bit sooner. There's also this year, which has been what we've done for quite some time now, designated hill routes, four hill routes, which allows our travelers to get from the bluff to the valley, or from the valley to the bluff, and once they're at one end of the spectrum there, they should be able to travel, you know, without a lot of concern. The hills are definitely a critical area for us. We have eight tandem plow routes. Essentially, what eight tandem plow routes will do is we will cover the city with either two, three, or four trucks on a route, and we can get it curb-to-curb in a much quicker time, and that opens up the traveling for the traveling public so a lot sooner. The best time for us to do a tandem plow route is in the overnight hours. It can be done during the day, but with the amount of traffic, it gets in our way. The overnight hours, very minimal traffic, especially if you're talking about 1, 2, or 3 o'clock in the morning, and we can call a tandem route together, and the next thing you know, we've got three and four trucks going down the street, one behind the other, and we're pushing snow from one curb to the other in a pass, sometimes in less than a pass. So I mean, the tandem plow routes are very, very good for us. And then, of course, we are, we have the 24-hour around-the-clock operations, and that does involve the two 12-hour shifts when two or more inches of snow is forecasted. The reason we do the two or more inches is because at two inches or more of snow, we go into the residential districts, okay? Once we're done with the arterials, the main arterials. So two inches is the point where it'll take us into the residential, and then we will continue on with the 12-hour shifts until those are completed. The map there on the side of the screen does show the 23 routes, and they're all color-coordinated so that you can see the size of each route. Some larger than others, but that's what we have there. So this is, what's highlighted in blue here is what is considered the IDOT roads within the city, but within a certain portion of the city. Some of these roads here, we've been maintaining them through our intergovernmental agreement. Unfortunately, right now, we don't have an intergovernmental agreement with them, so they will be maintaining the traveling lanes, and we will be maintaining the parking and the bike lanes. So there's going to be shared responsibility there. Now, the complicating thing about that is its timing, and being that this is the first time we've had to deal with this, it's going to be trial and error until we can figure out the best process here. So some of the examples of the roads that are IDOT roads are Western Avenue, Lincoln Avenue, Howett, Knoxville, Southwest Adams, Northeast Adams. There's a number of roads out there, like I said, that are highlighted on this map here itself. So due to financial and operational impacts, the city and IDOT did not renew a 10-year intergovernmental agreement. That's where, now, so this might get confusing to some of the residents, but again, we're going to work through it, and we're going to make sure that we're covering what we need to cover. IDOT, again, will cover the drive lanes, we will cover the parking lanes, and the bike lanes, okay? There's a picture there that gives you an idea of what the parking lanes look like. They will be pushing snow into our parking lanes, or to the parking lanes, which we do maintain, and we will take the snow from the parking lane to the curb. So that's going to be the process. Now, it's going to be different this year than it has been for many years in the past. We understand that. The message is, is that it's going to be taken care of, it just, again, it's a timing factor that's going to make a big difference, and we will continue to work on that. So our snow routes are, consist of the primary snow routes, arterial streets, 161 miles of the priority two residential streets. There's 332 miles with 80 miles of alleyways that we maintain. The city does not have a bare pavement policy, as you see on the screen. What that means is that we treat the streets, we'll pre-treat, we will treat, and we will plow, but there's no guarantee, we cannot give a guarantee, that there will be bare pavement. In other words, running water is what we, if we get it to running water, that's getting the bare pavement. There's, I mean, we attempt to do that, and that's our goal, but there's not a guarantee to get to bare pavement, and we just want people to understand that. Once we plow the snow, actually, depending on the inches, even before we plow the snow, you should be able to travel on flat ground without any real issues. Our goal, to maintain safe travel routes during the winter season and to restore mobility for the traveling public within a reasonable timeframe following winter storm conditions. So that's basically what we talked about. No bare pavement policy when it comes to that. Snow removal is a public safety operation, and it truly is a public safety operation. So we just, we want to make sure that we are understood, you know, by the public. The timing of snow, snow removal, that is, between two to six inches, our snow plan allows us for up to 24 hours to clear the entire city. Six or more inches is citywide arterial snow removal within 36 hours of the snow removal. And then, of course, we have our ABC, which we call our ABC subroutes. That's a rotational approach to plowing residential streets. So as you can see here, the example is storm event one, we start with A, go to B, and then go to C, and what that is made up of is one route is broken up into three different routes, okay? So then, the second storm will go B, C, A, and then on down, you can see the others. The reason for that is, is it's effective, first of all, but it doesn't give everybody the impression, it does give the impression that they're the first or the last all the time, but nobody is first and nobody is last every time there's a storm. We rotate that, those routes. And then the parking enforcement. So the parking bans go into effect, as you can see the signs on the right side of the screen, no parking two or more inches of snow. Once there's two inches predicted, that goes into effect, the two inches or more of snow, there's no parking on the arterial streets. Two or more inches is, again, would put us back into residential, residential plowing, clearing. Two or more inches is the standard. Now, the downtown business district says no more, no parking two or more inches of snow, and it's got between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. The reason that we have no parking between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM is we can get downtown and clear the business district, the downtown business district, so that people can get to work in Peoria, and we can keep functioning, okay? So that's, that falls in line with the streets from, for example, Spalding to Compton, and from the Water Street to the Bluff. So we can clear that area in the overnight hours, and Peoria can continue to function. One other thing, once that goes into effect, the two inches of snow goes into effect for no parking, it's in effect for 48 hours. That's automatic. It's not something that we would consistently put messaging out with. If we do get phone calls, we do, we do, you know, explain that it is a 48-hour deal. And so this is for information for the public. There's releases that are sent through GovDelivery, we have communication groups, HOI Neighborhood Associations, subscribers, Facebook, you can see all that, that's up there, Peoria Cares, the city website, and of course, during the major storms, we've been able to get on the billboards at different large intersections in town, which has been a donation to us to get the message out, so that works well on the larger storms. But you can see the phone number for Peoria Cares, and then there's the website, of course, for information. How to contact Public Works, our phone number is right there, 494-8800. We have a prerecorded storm update at storm update at 494-8850, I'm sorry, 8830. So, people can call that number and find out without having to have a live voice to talk to. They can call that number and find out what the updates are, and what's happened, and what's going to continue to happen during a snowstorm. The Snow Call Center, which we have at Drees Lane, is 494-8850. That's activated during the significant storms. It's dedicated to staff, we have a dedicated staff to answer the phones, and then there's a voicemail backup. So, if somebody's on the phone, and somebody calls in and they can't get the voice, there will be a voicemail, so we can return that call. We won't miss the calls. Typically, what happens with the Snow Call Center is those go into effect when we get the large events with a lot of phones ringing, okay? So, this will help relieve, you know, the phones from ringing throughout the day between the prerecorded storm update and the Snow Call Center if we actually have that activated. So, we talked about IDOT a little bit earlier, and, you know, they're going to be maintaining the drive lanes at this point. We are maintaining, again, the parking lanes and the bike lanes. These are the phone numbers, or this is the phone number for anyone that has any questions pertaining to the IDOT roads. Their phone number is 309-671-4487. That number is for anything and everything related to emergency communications that you need to get to IDOT with, with questions, with concerns, with, you know, if the roads are getting snow-packed and we're having trouble traveling, for any concern, trees down, you name it, that's the mainline number. And I really, really impress upon people that they should use that number. Now, I get it, sometimes you're not going to know if it's an IDOT call, or it's going to be a city call, we get that. If you do call us, we're going to refer you to that number, not to not want to take care of your issue, but because we know that it's an IDOT jurisdictional responsibility. There's also a website that anyone can go on to get information about IDOT roads throughout the entire state, and that's www.gettingaroundillinois.com. That's a website that will tell you if you're going to travel to St. Louis, travel to Chicago, or going to the east end of the state. It'll tell you what roads are out there, and what condition are in those roads. So, we encourage people, again, to utilize that as well. One other thing before we get to questions, I just wanted to mention, it's kind of a timely thing. Today is First Responders, National First Responders Day, okay? And it comes timely with us being first responders in this event. Police, fire, paramedics, military, all public, or all first responders, and we appreciate everything they do, but Public Works has been recognized as a first responder as well. We just wanted to put that out there because we are all about safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Maroon. Several questions, and I'll kick these off with a few questions of my own. We always look forward to your snow presentation every year, and I'm sure your team is going to do another phenomenal job this winter. So, first question is, when do you expect our first snowfall?
You'll get that first update as soon as we know.
All right. Now, more seriously, under the shared responsibilities, because even though I'm optimistic, I do have some concerns with the shared responsibilities, this new plan. Can you go back to the slide that talks about the shared responsibilities, and identifies the streets?
Okay. This is just a handful of the streets. Western Avenue, that is from Lincoln to, literally, to Farmington Road, okay? It'll go around the bend on Main Street for two blocks. Lincoln Avenue, that's from Jefferson to Griswold. I'm sorry, Lincoln is from Laramie to Jefferson, and Howett is from, that's one way going the other direction, so Jefferson to Griswold.
Griswold, right.
And then Knoxville Avenue, we've maintained that for quite a number of years, and that goes from Pennsylvania, actually, up from Glen Oak, where you go up the ramp. So, from Glen Oak at the ramp, all the way to War Memorial Drive now is a shared, well, that's no longer shared, because there's no parking lanes on that street. So, that will be their responsibility on Knoxville.
The entire, almost the entire street of Knoxville?
Yes. And I will tell you, geez, I want to find, so, these roads here, we just spoke of them, but if you take a look at Northeast Adams, so basically from Wayne Street to where Adams and Jefferson come together at Kamatsu, that's going to be shared, because there's parking on those streets, or on that street, as well as Jefferson coming from that triangle, from there all the way to Spalding. It goes further than Wayne Street, it goes to Spalding. So, there's, you know, you can see on the map where one goes longer than the other. And then, Howett and Lincoln are the other two that have sidewalks. Glendale has sidewalks. And beyond that, it's going to be IDOT's responsibilities on the rest of those streets.
Right. And the streets that you named, those are the primary streets that now the city in the past has assumed responsibility for snow removal, but now this coming winter, IDOT is going to have responsibility for that snow removal. And I know that we maintain high standards, high standards, and you described the process of AB and CD, maybe not CD, but the process that we have in terms of prioritizing, rotating. Do we know what IDOT's process is? And do we know, are you assured that we're going to have those same high standards on these streets that are located within the city, that we're accustomed to having city services?
So, we had a meeting with them earlier today, as a matter of fact, to iron out these issues. And their number-one priority is the interstate.
Right.
But they have streets on all state routes, or on all, roads on all state routes. We expressed that our biggest concerns are the hills. For example, Spalding, Glen Oak, Berkeley, because of the ambulances and fire apparatus that need to get there, or police. So, that is a concern, and around, actually, that's probably Western Avenue Hill, that one also. Those can get away from you relatively quickly if we're not staying on it. And that's why we designate trucks solely for the hills, so that people can travel. Their plan is that they will, I mean, we may end up calling them and saying, hey, we've got these complaints here going on, and if they can't get to it, we're not going to turn our heads the other way. We can't turn our heads the other way. We will work with them to try to, you know, get this figured out, and we're going to work with them to get it figured out, how the timing of it's going to work. But the fact of the matter is, is that we still have to maintain, or make sure that these high visibility areas are being maintained.
Yes, and they are major streets in our city, and some of them, I mean, I can hear the complaints now that, yeah, Lincoln, Howett, Western, why are we being ignored? Why are these, why is Knoxville a major artery in our city? Why are we being ignored?
Right.
And I just, there has to be a strong backup plan, and there has to be high standards for these areas. And I think if we're going to make this change, we have to make sure that there's going to be high standards, continued.
Well, the communication is going to be the biggest piece that we're going to have to work with to get the message out, so that eventually, I mean, we won't probably have every person in the city of Peoria would have heard that message, but once the message gets out and people start talking about it, hopefully, that's going to drive home what's really happening. But do we know their exact plan? Well, we know what their plans are. You know, the interstates are priority, and the other secondary street, or the other routes are secondary, but they say that they'll have resources to work on that. So, we'll hold them accountable.
Okay. We'll be optimistic and wait and see. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Maroon. Just a couple of questions. Number one, did we finally equip our truck with GPS system, so we'd know where they're at once there's a phone call asking when a particular street will be cleared?
So, we don't have the GPS systems on the trucks right now. We would take a phone call, and then find out where they live, and then we can always radio to the truck that's doing that ABC route, or that residential route, to let them know approximately what time they may be getting there. And sometimes, on the ABC routes, you know, we start with A, and somebody might live on the C route, it's going to take a while for us to get to them, right? So, we want, you know, we want to make that understood, because we don't run and chase all these different locations, but we will get to that residential street soon, you know, soon after we get started on the ABC routes.
Do we have a lot of new drivers this year, and what kind of training they receive, and make sure we don't forget? Sometime we forget call the Saks or something. So, what kind of training they receiving?
So, we have quite a number of new drivers. We have actually 16 that are going through our training right now. We do an in-house training for two weeks of hands-on, and then on the streets. And then, we give them the opportunity, when that's done, to run their routes, drive their routes, so they get comfortable with and familiar with what the route looks like, how they're going to run it, which directions they're going to go in. It's also going to help them to identify manhole covers that they might hit, or trees that are low, or low-hanging wires. So, it gives us an opportunity while we're in dry pavement, and, you know, without any precipitation, to handle a lot of those things and get a lot of that resolved before we get into the storms.
Last question. Usually, every year during your presentation, you talk about the 24-hour and the 36-hour. When does it start? When does the clock start? I didn't hear you mention this year.
The clock starts when we get the phone call, when we get...
No, that's not the answer I'm looking for, is when do we start cleaning the roads, basically? The snow has to stop falling, is that correct?
It doesn't, no. Well, if we know that there's something significant coming, we go out with a pre-treat. We'll pre-treat with salt and brine. So, that can, that will happen typically before the first snowflake.
Okay. But I thought the 24-hour, you said in prior year, that starts, or 36-hour starts when the snow stops falling?
Oh, yes. Okay, I understand what you're asking now, yes. When the snow stops, we have 24 hours on two to six inches, and 36 hours over six inches.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Maroon. And I'm sure that things will go very well. They have gone well, I think, in the last few years, and thank you for that. Just have a technical question on your last slide. I'm looking at my iPad, and it has the Illinois Department of Transportation phone number is 671-3333.
That's the main line that rings into their front office?
So, that, that 4487
Yes.
is the right number. Thank you.
That is the number, that's the number for anything and everything pertaining to IDOT.
Okay. Thank you.
That goes to their emergency communications center, and they're on 24-hour. So, the 3333 is just a mainline number for the office.
Okay. Thanks very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. If there's no other questions or comments, can I get a motion to receive and file moved by Councilmember Seer, seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Director Maroon.
I'm Jake Wimmer.
Madam Clerk?
We are at regular business. 25-311 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request for the following. A, accept the executed grant agreement from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity in the amount of $2 million for construction costs of the Salvation Army's new men's shelter; and B, adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2025 revised budget relating to the general fund to recognize the receipt of grant funding from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity in the amount of $2 million for the Salvation Army's men's shelter. And Item B requires two-thirds vote of councilmembers voting, no less than six votes, and we need separate votes on each, please.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll turn the floor over to our Community Development Director to explain this item.
Thank you, Manager. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. While I wish this was a new project, this is a project we've already told you about that actually broke ground, excitingly, about a month and a half ago. The Salvation Army is working to expand their footprint down in the North Valley area to expand their ability to provide shelter to individuals, specifically, a lot of men who are experiencing homelessness with one of their expansions, and just kind of redoing the entire block. Like I mentioned, they broke ground about a month and a half ago. Last year, we applied with them, on their behalf, for a $2 million grant through the State of Illinois. This is just the paperwork to get it finalized, to go towards their about $20 million project. So, very excited that they, to actually get this money, but also that they are already starting construction. So, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve Item A, moved by Councilmember Regenbach, seconded by Councilmember Euler?
May I?
Yes, Councilmember Regenbach.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Director Doolan, for that explanation. And I just want to remind my colleagues that this is something that Salvation Army brought to us about a year ago. So, just keep that in mind as we look at the issues involved around the unsheltered, that even when you have a motivated provider, there's a lot of time involved in getting things to the finish line. So, I also want to recognize Staff Director Doolan and Catherine Murphy, our Grants Coordinator, for their efforts in being creative and getting this grant awarded to the city to pass on to Salvation Army. So, good work all around, and I think it shows the commitment that this council has to addressing this issue and thinking outside the box to get that done. And I'd already moved, didn't I?
Okay, yes, and I totally agree. Ditto, ditto, and it hasn't come without challenges. So, Director Doolan, thank you for your efforts in working through those barriers that you experienced along the way, so. Any other comments, questions? Please cast your ballots. As to Item A, motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Regenbach?
Approval of Item B.
Seconded by Councilmember Euler. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
25-312 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending an existing special use ordinance, number 17993, with waivers for a neighborhood center in a Class R6 multi-family residential district and a Class R8 multi-family residential district to add property to the boundary of the special use 404 Wayne Street and 817 Northeast Jefferson Avenue, and to amend the site plan to add a fence and to add a pavilion for the property located at 800 814 and 816 Northeast Madison Avenue, 801 803 809 815 and 817 Northeast Jefferson Avenue, and 404 and 406 Wayne Street, and 724 Northeast Madison Avenue, all in Peoria, Illinois.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now that we're moving into zoning items, I'm going to turn it over to our Assistant Director of Community Development, Lee Allison.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Madam Mayor, Council. Peoria Friendship House operates a wonderful neighborhood center at 800 Northeast Madison. They have an existing special use, and they'd like to amend it for a couple different things as... special use, and they'd like to amend it for a couple different things as as described. They would like to add two adjacent parcels into the fold of their existing special use that will be incorporated into their outdoor recreational area. They'd like to construct a pavilion for that recreational area, and then also add fencing to their property boundaries. I can answer questions if you have any at this time?
I don't think so. Councilmember Reganbach?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
I would move to approve, but with a couple amendments on this. If you look at page four with the special conditions on this, the number one, all parts of the fence shall be located on private property. That remains the same. Replace all non-ADA compliant sidewalks along the property for drainage within three years. I would like to make that four years. So the motion will be on condition two, that the sidewalks will be improved within four years. Condition three stays the same. Condition four will be a waiver to allow an eight-foot tall chain leak fence. This will be a playground for children, and if if you go down on site, you can see that the the six-foot fence doesn't really give the protection that it needs. And if they're playing ball or whatnot, that things can easily go over a six-foot fence. So we're going to allow them to have an eight-foot tall fence. And then on special condition five, the transitional buffer yard, we're going to lower that to a five-foot width. Because of the size of the lot and the improvements that they're making, there is nothing on the adjacent lot at this time, but it is zoned residential. So if that does become a residential, they would have that buffer of there of five foot. As as I walked aside and talked with Director Somerville, who sensed his regrets, he had a family situation tonight that he had to tend to. I think this is something that we'll want to look at longer term. This project, the fencing, the the playground equipment, the pavilion, it's about $175,000 project, which doesn't sound like a lot in terms of our budget. But when you look at a nonprofit that works with a very challenged group of people, that's a lot of money. And then the way our ordinance currently reads, we would have to they would have to improve the sidewalks, which the depth of the sidewalk drainage that they have would be well over the 175,000 that they're spending on on the project itself. So I don't I'm not asking for any special action tonight or anything, but I think we need to consider that if there's a way that there's thresholds that nonprofits that they don't need to make those infrastructure improvements. I know I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth here because I want the sidewalks to be improved, and we hear Director Powers tell us there's more demand than money, and that's exactly the same situation our nonprofits are in. So so by giving them four years, we'll we'll kind of punt on that one, I think. But I do think that's a discussion that we need to have at some time in the future. So with those amendments, I would move for approval.
Seconded by Councilmember Euler. And I would ask Director Allison, were you familiar with these recommended amendments?
Yes, we had had conversations, so I was I was informed, yes.
Okay, all right. And do you see them causing any kind of conflict?
No.
Okay.
Mostly.
Great. All right, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-five dash three-one-three is a communication from the city manager and director of community development with request to concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class C and neighborhood commercial district to expand a non-conforming outdoor storage use for the properties located at nine sixteen, nine eighteen, nine twenty, and nine twenty-two West Lincoln Avenue, Peoria, Illinois.
Mr. Manager?
Again, I'll turn it over to our Assistant Community Development Director.
Thank you. So this is Gets Fire, which is located at sixteen fifteen Southwest Adams, requesting to expand their outdoor storage area towards the Lincoln side of their property. And that requires a special use because it is non-conforming. It's existing non-conforming. Recommending approval, and there are some conditions that we've got in place. But if there are any questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson?
I don't have any questions, Madam Mayor. I would just like to make a motion.
If I could?
Excuse me. I'd like to make a motion to approve item twenty-five thirteen with the following amendments to the special use ordinance. Number one, excuse me, eliminate condition number one, requiring the removal of the existing chain leak fence. And item number two, eliminate condition number six, requiring replacement or repair of sidewalks. And this will allow for the outdoor storage to occur, but without the requirement to remove the existing chain leak fence or replacement of the sidewalks.
Okay, can I get a second? Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. I see you're staying put, Director Allison, so we'll- Madam Clerk?
Twenty-five dash three-fourteen is a communication from the city manager and director of community development with request to adopt one of the following: A, to concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to adopt ordinance A, approving a special use in a Class R three single-family residential district for a public elementary school for the property located at one zero zero two one North Pacific Street, Peoria, Illinois; or B, to concur with recommendation from staff to adopt ordinance B, approving a special use in a Class R three single-family residential district for a public elementary school for the property located at one zero zero two one North Pacific Street, Peoria, Illinois.
Director Allison?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this proposal is for a new elementary school, K through fifth grade, for the Dunlap School District. It's proposed to be new construction located behind or west of their existing Wilderweight School. It's a two-story, 80,000-square-foot school. I think it's helping to address their capacity issues that they have with their student population. It'll include an outdoor playground, basketball courts, a landscape courtyard, and a nature discovery garden. You have two ordinances before you because through the Planning and Zoning Commission's review came a slightly different recommendation. So the ordinance A is the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve with a condition that relates to repair or replacement of the public street that Pacific that currently fronts along the existing school. The condition from the Planning and Zoning Commission states, if that existing school is ever demolished or removed, the street work would be replaced as the condition it currently is in, okay? Which is it is a township road, okay? Ordinance B differs, and it is from staff's recommendation, same condition of if the existing school is ever demolished and the roadwork that needs to be repaired or replaced, the condition of that road would be to a city standard. So that's the the difference, is the condition of a future repair, replacement of a road if and only if that existing school, the Wilderweight School, is ever demolished. If it remains as currently constructed, there's there's no condition that comes into play with the road. And according to the Dunlap School, they may likely just utilize that existing school for, you know, their programming of their students with the new school.
Sure.
So I hope I'm able to clarify those two ordinances. Everything else remains the same with the recommendation. If I can answer any questions, I'm happy to.
Thank you, Director. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. After discussions with Dr. Scott Dearman, who was the superintendent for Dunlap School District, I also had conversation with Scott Adrian, who was the public work kind of their guru. I don't know if that's a real title, but he's the gentleman in charge of all the public work for Dunlap School District. And a conversation, lastly, with Tom Feldman, who was the chairman of Dunlap School District. All these gentlemen are on the same page, and I would move to concur with the recommendation B.
B, okay.
B, as in void.
May I get a second? Seconded by Councilmember Carmona. Continued discussion. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to enlighten me, Ms. Allison, you mentioned that that was a township road. And I'm not, first of all, it's not Peoria Township, right?
It's Medina.
Okay. And currently, the township maintains that road?
Yes, that's my understanding. We do not maintain it.
Okay. And so do we have the ability to specify how that road is taken care of, or whether it will be repaired, or, you know, that sort of thing? I mean, I don't I don't mind, but is that our power here?
Yes, it can be a part of this special use approval, and it's looking to the future.
Yes.
Yeah.
But it's not our street or our road, right?
Currently, no, it is not our street or road. But in the future, should it ever become, which is possible, we want to have, again, if conditions of that school are removed and they do make repairs or replacement of that street, it's a condition that the city can accept to our standards.
Do do we have the power to today to make such a requirement? I'm not saying we can or can't, but I'm I'm wondering, do we?
Yes.
Or maybe the-
If the confederation council wants to weigh in, sure.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our extrajudicial authority extends to a mile and a half beyond our current municipal borders, and includes subdivision authority, which deals with the quality of the infrastructure that's constructed by developers. When someone that has an existing use with an adjacent street that isn't up to city standard comes forward for an amendment or an adjustment to that use, we then have the authority to, at that point, exercise our extrajudicial or extraterritorial authority. The assumption is that over time, we will be expanding our corporate municipal boundaries and that the orderly development in the future will be consistent if we start applying city standards to that extraterritorial area. This is a common method utilized throughout the state of Illinois by municipalities to control how certain streets are improved before it becomes part of a city so that the standards don't have to be retroactively applied later on. Those retroactive street upgrades are very expensive. So this is why many subdivisions that are outside of the city are built to city standard. And this is just a small snippet of using that authority for just the area of improvement in front of the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, my question was not as to whether or not we would want this to happen. It was more a question of can we make this requirement? And I think you're saying that we can.
Within a mile and a half of our municipal boundary, we have the authority to impose these conditions as if it was within our municipality.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Allison, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. We have a motion on the floor to approve item B. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-five dash three-fifteen is a communication from the city manager and Finance Director Comptroller with request to adopt an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levy to pay principal of and interest on general obligation corporate purpose bonds of the City of Peoria, Peoria County, Illinois. Twenty-fifteen series B, C, and D, twenty-sixteen series C, twenty-eighteen series A, twenty-twenty series A and B, twenty-twenty-one series A, B, and C, twenty-twenty-two series A, and twenty-twenty-three series A, and the partial abatement of taxes levied to pay principal and interest on twenty-eighteen series B general obligation bonds in the amount of $546,938. The partial abatement of taxes levied to pay principal and interest on twenty-nineteen general obligation bonds in the amount of $500,000, and the partial abatement of taxes levied to pay principal and interest on twenty-twenty-two series general obligation bonds in the amount of $372,200.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This starts the first three items of adopting the budget for twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven. And I'll turn it over to our Finance Director to explain the details of this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. This this ordinance in front of you tonight abates close to $18 million in levies that are associated with our with our existing debt. It maintains $2 million for the purposes of road improvements. If you remember, through our discussions in the budget, as well as just overall on the truth and taxation hearing, this is a component of our rate, and we'll talk more about that on the next item. But really, this ordinance in front of you is to abate that around 19 million and maintain that $2 million for roads. And with that, I'm available if there's any questions.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to adopt this ordinance.
Seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Any questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-five dash three-sixteen is a communication from the city manager and Finance Director Comptroller with request to adopt an ordinance levying the taxes for fiscal year 2026 for municipal purposes for the City of Peoria, Illinois.
Mr. Manager?
Once again, I'll turn it over to the Finance Director. This is our property tax levy ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. The property tax levy in front of you tonight is in line with the levy estimate that we discussed on September the 23rd. We also had a truth and taxation hearing last last Tuesday on this matter, because the average or the estimated growth in EAV next year is, as I say, a little bit over six and a half percent. The the key, I think, pieces for council and for the public, this levy is anticipated to be $34,418,000. From a truth and taxation standpoint, the rate, however, is staying flat. When you take into account that the abatement of the bond ordinance that you just completed, as well as the library bonds, we're actually seeing a slight decrease in our rate from 1.5381 to 1.5284. So this ordinance in front of you tonight is in line with the council's previous direction on maintaining the the tax rate at or below the the previous year's rate.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Manager and Mr. Craddy for their work, and I also thank you for to all my colleagues, Madam Mayor. It was a good team effort this year, so I'd like to move to adopt this ordinance.
Seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Any questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-five dash three-seventeen is a communication from the city manager and Finance Director Comptroller with request to approve a resolution adopting a 2026-2027 biennial budget for the City of Peoria, and this item requires a majority vote of council members voting no less than six votes.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the appropriation ordinance. So this is the-
So this is the actual spending authority that we will then have for FY twenty-six with the estimates built into it for FY twenty-seven. We'll come back next year with the revised budget for adoption of twenty-twenty-seven at that point in time.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, thank you, Mr. Manager, Director Craddy, and Madam Mayor and all my colleagues for all your efforts this budget year. Move to approve this ordinance.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any questions, comments? I too want to thank our staff leadership, Mr. Manager, Director Craddy, and your team. You've done a phenomenal job and great report backs and I think we're on the right track here.
Thank you, Mayor. And I really want to thank all the department directors and their teams for putting together a really solid budget this year as well that we could work with.
And thank you, Councilmember Seer, for your recommendations early on that we remove fees and I think we all agreed that that was a good thing to do for our residents. So thank you for your leadership. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Yay! Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business. Twenty-five dash two-sixty-two is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance rezoning property from a Class R four single-family residential district to a Class C and neighborhood commercial district and P one parking district and approving a special use in a Class C and neighborhood commercial district for auto repair for the properties located at ten-thirty-nine West Lincoln Avenue and ten-thirty-four, ten-thirty-six, and ten-thirty-eight West Howett Street, Peoria, Illinois.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is another zoning item. This is unfinished business, so we do have our Assistant Community Development Director, Lee Allison, back at the podium.
Thank you. So Mr. Raspberry owns the property at ten-thirty-nine West Lincoln Avenue and he has reached out to us about acquiring three adjacent lots that are currently within the land bank program. So they're owned by the city. And he would like to rezone the properties all to C and neighborhood commercial, oh, excuse me, rezone the adjacent properties to parking for utilization with his business that he operates at the ten-thirty-nine West Howett and also zoning that property to C and neighborhood commercial. It's all to help facilitate his auto repair business and then give him some, a little bit of extra parking. With that, we recommend approval and the Planning and Zoning Commission also did as well. I can answer questions if you'd like, if you have any.
Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just would like to say I did get an opportunity to meet with Mr. Raspberry, got a good understanding of his auto repair operation and became familiar with a lot of the work he's doing and the co-op opportunities that he's providing for young people. So I am in full support of what he's doing and look forward to his continued operation at that location. I would like to move to approve.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Any questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
If there is no further unfinished business, we would be at new business.
Okay, two items from me. First is looking, we originally gonna pass the vote on the budget on November the fourth. However, we did it today and looking at business items for that day, there are very few. So originally, our meeting was scheduled for November the eleventh, which is Veterans Day. We can't do that, so we moved it back to the fourth. So unless there's any objection, we're gonna cancel the meeting for November the fourth and our next meeting will be November the eighteenth. Are we good with that? We don't need to vote on it, but yes. Okay, all right. Thank you for that. And then secondly, over the weekend, there were a lot of things going on in Peoria, Dewali, and then there was the NAACP Freedom Fund banquet and they always have an awards program that recognizes people and leaders in our community. And two of those individuals, one was our chief of police, was recognized. I don't remember the name of the award that he received, but he received a leadership award from the NAACP in recognition of his leadership. And one of the other awards was awarded to Councilman Dr. Andre Allen and he received the NAACP John W. Stinson Leadership Award. So congratulations. That's a great award named after a great individual, former chief of police, the first African-American chief of police in the city of Peoria. So congratulations. Other new business? Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When we had that item with the short-term rental in this new neighborhood and staff did a review of the covenants on this, I think as you look at best practices in other cities, also take a look if there's a neighborhood being built without such covenants. Obviously, there's not gonna be an HOA until the houses are built, so how do we protect that new construction, that new neighborhood until such time as they can be organized since STRs are something that we have a special use for and it can be limited by covenants or HOA restrictions? So if you could just include that in your review, I think that would be appreciated.
Good idea. Thank you. Any other new business? Councilmember Gordon Young?
I was just, thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just gonna give you the name of the award that the chief won.
Oh, okay, do you know?
It is the, hold on, let me roll it in here. It's the John H. Gwen Junior Courage Award.
Oh, he won the John H. Gwen Courage Award, NAACP. That's fantastic. Congratulations, chief. Any other new business? Madam Clerk?
We're at citizens' opportunity to address the city council. We have not received any cards. We do not have an executive session, so we would be at adjournment.
Can I get a motion to adjourn? Moved by Councilmember Velpula, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Please cast your ballots. We are adjourned. Thank you for your service.